2018 meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the city of Troy to order. It is 7:30, and before I call the roll, or I have Mr. Evans call the roll, I'm going to introduce for the public that is present and those who are watching at home, everyone who's up here on the dais, and our support folks on the side. So, starting over here to my left, your right, is Mr. Lambert, who's a member of this zoning board. To his right is Mr. Keltsounas. He is a voting member, a full voting member here tonight. He's an alternate to this board, so he is sitting in for someone who could not be here tonight, Ms. Koopa. This is Vice Chairman Eisenbacher. I'm Glenn Clark, the chairman of this board. This is Mr. Desmond. This is Mr. McCauley, who's one of our newest members, and he's doing a fine job. And at the end is Mr. Higawas, who is a member as well. Over on the side is Mr. Evans. He represents the city administration, and he'll serve in an administrative capacity here tonight, supporting the board. And all the way over there is Mr. Matzni, and he is an assistant city attorney for the city of Troy, and he will serve as our legal advisor for all proceedings here tonight. So, without any further ado, Mr. Evans, I believe we're ready for the roll.
Mr. Clark.
I'm here.
Mr. Higawas.
Here.
Mr. Desmond.
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Here.
Mr. McCauley.
Here.
Mr. Lambert.
Here.
Mr. Keltsounas.
Yes. So, we have quorum, and we are going to move forward to item number two. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher is going to read for the public that is viewing in here tonight our rules and procedures as a board. So, this is also engaging you, the people of Troy, and those who want to share their thoughts with us here tonight. So, he's just going to tell you some simple steps of being involved here at this board meeting.
The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by Troy City Council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. Procedure: The board will hear the items and the order they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then, the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board, to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium. The speakers should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, next-door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Eisenbacher. So, before we proceed, I just want to welcome everyone here tonight. I see a good number of students who are visiting tonight. Welcome. Thank you for coming. I was in that same role many years ago when I was in school, doing exactly what you're doing, and it's exciting to have you here tonight. I saw many students at the city council meeting last night I attended for a period of time, so welcome to everyone that's here. We're going to move to item number three, approval of the minutes. Are there any comments, questions, or inquiries about what's been presented in the packet? Mr. Lambert.
I would move approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Desmond, seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Higawas.
Yes.
Mr. Desmond.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. McCauley.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Keltsounas.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes, motion carries. So, we move on to the approval of the agenda. This is for the board's consideration. Are there any suggested changes or thoughts on moving things around? Okay, we are set. So, the printed agenda, as you walked in, for the public, that is now our business for tonight's meeting. So, we do have two cases in front of us tonight. First one is item 5A related to 1240 Renwood. Mr. Evans, could you please present to us on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and if I could direct everyone's attention to the monitors at the front of the room. This is a variance request for property at 1240 Renwood, and it involves some proposed additions to an existing single-family home. Now, this is an aerial of the neighborhood, and this property is circled in red on the overhead. This neighborhood is south of Big Beaver Road and east of Adams. This is a close-up of the property layout in the neighborhood with the subject property at 1240 Renwood outlined in red. And the yellow represents all the properties in the area that are zoned and used for single-family residential. So, as you can see, everything in this view is that way. And I've zoomed in a little closer to show the relationship of the property and the house to Renwood, which is to the left, and Nampa Court, which is to the top. Now, the applicants provided a site plan with the same configuration as the last slide, orientation, I should say. And the smaller hatched area indicates the existing home. The larger hatched areas indicates the areas that will be added, or proposed to be added onto the house. Now, the orange area is the area where they're requesting some variances. Now, what the code says is that any additions to this house need to be set back 25 feet from the property lines adjacent to each street. Now, they're going to meet the 25 feet along Renwood, but the addition at the front or the left of this slide shows that the proposed addition will be 19 feet from the Nampa property line, and just under 13 and a half feet set back from the Nampa property line in the back there on the east. So, in order to proceed with the addition as proposed, they are seeking relief from the zoning board for those setbacks. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any questions or comments for staff? Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Evans, so just to be clear, that one horizontal dash line is the setback as it would be as if the house had been built currently within the setback requirements?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other member of the board? Seeing that there isn't anyone at this time, we're going to call the petitioner representative or the petitioner, or the petitioner's representative and the petitioner, to the podium. So, please identify yourself in your relationship to the property in question.
Good evening. My name is Bert Kosick. I am an architect, 2441 Dorchester, Birmingham, Michigan. So, Mr. Evans did a good job of giving an overview.
Excuse me, and you represent the petitioner?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like this to go off?
You don't have to.
So, that's Will and Ashley.
It's for the public record.
Will and Ashley Nance.
Okay, thank you.
So, they are the homeowner. Hopefully, you had a chance to review your packet. It's an existing house. It's been there for 50-plus years. It's in too good of a condition to tear down and build new and make a new building conform within the zoning ordinance, and I don't think that's in the budget to tear this house down to build a new house. So, the Nances have owned this house for approximately four years, so they were not part of the group that created this house. There must have been something in the ordinance that changed over the time, I presume. I presume it was not built like this as a nonconforming. So, they have a desire to increase the size of the house, make some interior modifications to make it work better for them. We've worked very hard to try to do this within the ordinance to minimize any variance. So, if you look at the diagram, the orange areas, which are relatively small in the scope of things, they, I didn't do the math, but I'd say it's 12% or something of the building footprint that actually requires a variance request. They, the Nances did have a chance to speak with most of their neighbors. I think they have nine signatures, and somebody just showed up from out of town, and so we have a ten signature from their neighbors that show they're in support of this. So, if you'd like, we have copies of that. We can pass that out through the chair.
When you're finished with your remarks, if you can hand it to Mr. Lambert, he'll end up being in the public record when we're all done reviewing it. So, come, yeah, please bring it forward. If you're ready to deliver, that's fine. Thank you.
So, in the letter, it gives a fairly detailed description based on your five principles or A through E, sort of the argument for getting a variance based on practical difficulty. I can dive into that in more detail if you like, or is it appropriate that the letter would represent sort of our thought process?
Sure. We'll see if a member of the board has any questions on it here.
But just to sum it up, it's, you know, strict compliance with the ordinance seems like it's unduly burdensome. We've tried to mitigate the circumstances. In no way does this negatively impact neighbors. In fact, we think with the investment and the design, it'll enhance the house. It's not a health, safety, welfare issue. And again, we've worked really hard to design it in such a way that it conforms to the reforms and other aspects of the design, so it doesn't look out of place.
Okay. Anything else? Great. For the board members, is there any questions, comments? Mr. Higawas.
I have a question for you. In the statement of practical difficulty, it says that expanding to the southeast portion was impractical. Can you speak to what you looked at to expand there and why it wasn't going to work?
It's sort of interesting because, at least, new homes today typically have sort of, you know, a front and a back, and a lot of people live in their backyard, certainly when we have nice weather. And so, with the L-shaped configuration, the sort of north-south rectangle is the house, and the east-west leg is the garage. So, you know, access into the backyard without landlocked interior spaces, that's where the real challenge was. So, in the, I think the floor plans are included in your packet. You can see there are, you know, without blowing up the entire house and working with the existing structural components of the house, it currently has a bedroom and a bathroom located in the southeast portion of the house. And again, a bedroom needs daylight and egress windows, and so taking that orange and moving it, shifting it into the backyard would create a lot of problems. Wouldn't require a variance, but wouldn't make for a sensible house.
Right.
Anyone else for the petitioner's representative? Okay, you can have a seat, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, why don't we ask Mr. or Vice Chairman Eisenbacher to share with us the public's input via email or printed letter that was shared with the staff for our review?
Yep. On the table in front of us, we had a letter from 1227 Renwood, which is across the street and diagonal in opposition because of concern about it being a radical change to the architecture and a radical change to look and feel of the neighborhood. And then, the petitioner presented an item that was signed by nine of the neighbors surrounding the house on, and looking at virtually all the neighbors except for the one that sent the letter in opposition, minus one or two from the map.
Good. Thank you. So, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing to hear from anyone who's come before the board to share their insight on this matter. So, if you'd like to address the board, please step to the podium and identify yourself, Would anyone like to address the board on item number 5A? Please approach the podium at this time. Seeing that there isn't anyone, we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for further discussion or possible action. Or a member of the board that'd like to be recognized. Mr. Higawas.
I have one more open-ended question here. I know that we're looking at one zoning ordinance for setback from the, I guess, the front yard, on two front yards, really. But one thing I noticed, and this is something that we talked about maybe a year and a half ago for a pool, a nonconforming pool, and it came back maybe a couple months in a row, that Section 144 for nonconforming structures, whether a building or a structure, should not be enlarged or altered in any way that increases its nonconformity. So, I think that, for me, that's the starting point, to get over that hurdle, to consider granting the variance. I'm just wondering what other people think on that.
Were you speaking about the nonconforming pool with the marine blue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's the only one we've addressed in quite some time, but I could be wrong. Would anybody else like to address your colleagues on the board?
I just want to clarify.
Mr. McCauley. Please proceed.
The only place that I'm seeing, and making sure that I'm seeing, is the only place that it's not meeting, our setbacks are along Napa because of the pre-existing already 13 feet. That's what they want to build to. Otherwise, it's good as far as Renwood and to its existing neighbors to the south. Is that correct?
Right. The variance is necessary along Napa.
Okay.
I mean, I see, I mean, the fact that it's a corner lot and that it's got, I mean, I don't know if that constitutes, you know, an unusual site characteristic, but they're clearly limited in ways that their neighbors would not be based on the fact that it is a corner lot. I mean, realistically, if they want to do anything to this property, I mean, it's a relatively tiny amount of space that they have to play ball with, and I can't see any other alternatives for where they would add additional square footage. It seems like any modifications that didn't get this variance would make the house more out of character and make it more architecturally abnormal than to grant the variance and allow it to, I mean, basically become cohesive at that point. It would look, I think, more in line with what already is there. So, I don't know, based on that irregularity and the difficulties of it being a corner lot, I would be more in favor of granting variance than not. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Evans, is that correct, that since this is a corner lot, they have two front yards and the appropriate setbacks for two front yards?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Mr. Lambert.
I'm going to move to approve the variance based upon the statement of practical difficulty that we have that our vice chairman read to us earlier. Number A is the exceptional characteristics of the property, of the fact that it has two front yards on a corner lot. B, the characteristics are related to the premises for which the variance is sought. Item C, the dimensional requirements are not of a personal nature. Item D, the characteristics were not created, the dimensional requirements were not created by the current or previous owner. And letter number E, the variance will not be harmful to or alter the essential character of the area in which the property is located.
Second.
And a motion made by Lambert, seconded by Desmond, for approval with the comments that Mr. Lambert made in support. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher.
Yeah. This one is difficult by the statement that Mr. Higawas said at the beginning, but the mitigating factor is, is that the way the house was originally built under prior zoning ordinance makes it so that there is no other way to really expand it without a major tear up or altering the neighborhood for the worse. So, I mean, we deal with these items one at a time. This one, I believe, is pretty straightforward insofar as the hardship is caused by the relatively small lot, double setback, and placement of the home on the lot from the zoning ordinance at the time it was built.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Desmond.
This is for approval of the variance, correct?
Yes. Yes. Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. McCauley.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Keltsounas.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Higawas.
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, you have your variance. Item number 5B is related to a request from Mohammed and Raza related to 580 East Waddles. Mr. Evans, could you please present to us on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this property on 580 East Waddles is a request to split a property into two that needs dimensional variance for each one. The subject property is located on the south side of Waddles, west of Rochester Road. That's a close-up of the property outlined in red, and it's just east of Jennings. And as previously, the area in yellow denotes all surrounding property and the existing property zoned and used for single-family residential. And that's another close-up of the subject property. Now, the next slide is going to be a little different, but trying to represent the same thing. And what they've shown here, the applicant, is that the subject property is outlined in yellow, and what they want to do is bisect from north to south and create two equal-sized lots. And the zoning ordinance requires that any newly-created lots in this zoning district be at least 85 feet wide. The proposed lots are both going to be 81 feet wide, so in order to proceed with this split, get their approval from the assessor, they need relief from the board. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any questions of city staff? Mr. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick question. In the pack of information that you supplied to us, you have a list of adjacent properties and showing their parcel frontage.
Right.
And if I'm correct, there's only one property in here that's as small as 81 feet. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's actually the property adjacent to this at the corner of Jennings and Waddles.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
The previous slide that was up with, well, you had it, not that one, the one before, where does this come from? This was your, from?
No, this is from the applicant.
This is from the applicant because it's showing multiple, it's 81 foot on either side. So, is that, is this verified, or?
I believe, but we might want to ask the applicant, but it appears to mirror the 81 feet, possibly the original plat.
Okay. Anyone else? We're going to call the petitioner or the petitioner's representative forward. Good evening.
Hi.
Could you identify yourself and your relationship to the property in question?
Myself, Mohammed Abdurshukr, and good evening, everybody, respected board members and everybody here. And myself and my friend, Ramiz, we are the buyers of this property.
Okay.
And so, and let's, basically, we are living in Troy since five years. I work for a software company. I'm a software engineer, and my friend also do the same thing. And we are planning to buy this lot and split it into two parts and planning to build a new house. It's like living in Troy is a dream of ours, actually. And, you know, I have three kids. My friend has two kids, so we are planning to build two houses and also like planning to send our kids to Troy School District. And we have a challenge that this standard procedure is, you know, we need 85 footage for each lot, but our lots are, after splitting, it's coming as 81. It's something not new. This lot is previously two lots. The current owner, he bought this lot and merged into one parcel. And that's all, you know. I request you guys to your opinion and approve this request.
Thank you. You can stay right there. We're going to see if there are any questions of you by a member of the board.
Well, I'll direct my questions to you. Where did this slide, where it's showing the parcels on either side being 81 feet, where did that information come from?
That's from this, you know, original plan from you guys, you know. Can I?
Was it subdivision site plan?
Hold on your comments until you get to the microphone. It has to be on the public record. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, please.
So, basically, that's from, that's from original application, and also, we didn't survey the lot. We took from city of Troy website, you know. We did some research on that. And also, that is the part of application.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chairman Eisenbacher.
I believe this screen up there, I believe it's a scaling issue. The property to the right in that view, to the east, is 83. If you zoom in.
Yes, this is 83, the right side one. The left side one is 81. Yes, 83, that's 83.
Okay.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
Anyone else for the petitioner?
One more question. You said that the lot was originally separated, but then it was joined together by the previous owner to build on, and that's why it's now a single lot instead of two?
Yes.
Okay. So, one of our criteria is that the issue caused was not caused by the current or previous owner, so that's the only reason I ask that question. It's one of the criteria. So, in that capacity, I think there might be some issue. I don't know.
Anyone else for the petitioner? Mr. Lambert.
I don't know if you had a chance to talk with Mr. Evans about your application or not, but did he explain to you about the concept of a practical difficulty or hardship associated with the property and why the board would be approving this based upon a hardship you're facing?
He did, actually, you know. Basically, you know, we are, it's very hard to find a house in Troy, you know. We are searching so many lots. Actually, we want to buy a single lot, you know. We want to live together. We're basically from India, and, you know, our kids will have the friends like that we are searching, you know. We don't find any lots. We're searching since 200 years, you know. It's very costly in the west side of Troy, so this is a lot one we find recently, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else for the petitioner? Okay, if you could, please have a seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So, Vice Chairman Eisenbacher, do we have communications on this matter?
We have one communication that was set on the table. It is from 640 East Waddles, which when I was looking, that is the house that is three properties to the east. That is the one property that meets the 85-foot width. And they are concerned about splitting the lots and making them smaller, to put it in one sentence.
Okay, thank you. And this is a no.
No.
A request for a no vote, yeah. Okay. Anyone else on, like to be heard on this matter before we open the public hearing? Mr. Evans.
And just to point a clarification, the question did come up as to, in the applicant's slide, for the width of the property to the east being 83, and it does say 83 on the applicant's slide, but our records show it as 84 feet wide.
Thank you. So, I'm going to open the public hearing on this matter, and if you'd like to address the board, please proceed to the podium and just state your name and your relationship, if any, to the property in question.
Great. Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Jeremy Rowe. I'm a resident 3889 Route Drive, which is basically right behind the property, kind of almost like on a diagonal to a certain extent. I don't have necessarily an objection to this property being split off. The concern I have really more or less is sightlines in terms of property lines of where this property is, and really kind of more or less from a aesthetic standpoint. Right now, right where my property is currently listed, I also have a shed in the back for my lawnmower and what have you. And there's this kind of beautiful woods that also exists right behind it where we have deer that come by as well and other animals as well, so it kind of makes it, makes this area of Troy very, very pretty, for lack of a better term. So, our concern really is more or less of both myself and my wife, who've lived now in Troy now for three years, really kind of more or less just looking at that from that sort of standpoint, really wanted to kind of remain in that particular space. We understand, obviously, the applicant wants to have two properties there. It just seems to us that it's going to be a very cramped space, and because of that also, it's going to eliminate some of that beauty that exists with some of those tree sightlines. So, if this were to go through, our request would be, if possible, to retain at least a little bit of that to obviously kind of, not only for privacy sake, but also kind of, kind of keep that once again, beautiful area of Troy preserved.
So, if I could just ask, so you were saying that the trees are on the petitioner's property?
As far as we can tell, yes. There's a very big wooded There's a very big wooded area that exists, not only also at 580, but also at 3894 Jennings as well. That also kind of combines that area. So it's very deep and very lush, especially during the springtime and summertime when obviously those trees are in bloom. It gives a very nice, beautiful aesthetic to it, and also gives us some privacy from our property as well. So our concern is, instead of having all that brush eliminated or those trees eliminated, that would require us obviously have to erect some sort of fence or something like that for privacy. So we're kind of more or less relying on that natural beauty for our privacy sake.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board on this matter? So final call for 5B public comment on the variance request by the petitioner. I'm going to close out the public hearing on that matter and bring it back to the board for consideration or possible action. Mr. Galas.
Maybe I can direct a question to the city, Mr. Evans. Do we know more about the backstory about why this went from a two parcel property to a one parcel property?
I did not look into that.
Mr. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Evans, I'm going to catch off guard here with a question. And I see what the applicants are trying to do. They'd like to have two homes next to each other, but this piece of property would require a split that requires a variance. What would be as an alternative? Is this piece of property too small for them to pursue putting a site condo on, where they would put two residents on the same piece of property?
That, I don't know. I'm not sure if they've explored it.
Okay. All right. I told you I'd catch off guard, so.
Yeah, it's not clear as to whether I could opine on that.
I think that's a very good question. I'd like to have an answer to that, if possible, and to the previous question that Mr. Galas had. I just think that, you know, moving forward, this is going to be more common. I think the letter from, was this a lady? It looks like, I don't know if.
Jared.
Yeah, Jared is a man or woman. But related to 640 East Waddles, you know, the situation, I'm sure Mr. Desmond can address this because he's a realtor, you know, as a community matures, and, you know, at one point in time, you were more country, you had these really large expansive lots that made it really wonderful to raise packs of kids and have dogs and all that. And then, as the community matures, and there's fewer parcels available, then this concept of splitting lots and just getting in on the school district or getting in on kind of a piece of the action as far as, in a very nice neighborhood but not having as much property to maintain, maybe very, obviously clearly, it seems like it's very appealing to certain people. But at the end of the day, I also think that we, as a board, need to consider the 21st century realities of those same requests. So to Mr. Lambert's question, you know, does that fit the bill and maybe move the homes potentially even closer to each other because it is a site condo or a cluster scenario? I think that we should see about that because we do have at least one neighbor who's concerned about that issue and another neighbor concerned about others. So what I would propose, if someone would like to make a motion to this effect, we could postpone this to next meeting's agenda, have the staff come back with a full report on those two inquiries that we have, or that I would like to request, and do all of our due diligence and consider it again next meeting. And then, that's plenty of time, if we see something we like, for, you know, we're not going to pass at all the building season up for anybody who's trying to develop a parcel or parcels.
Would something like a site condo going in here be something that comes before us? That would be a planning committee scenario, right?
It would be a planning, and a lot of that depends on really what an applicant designs and brings to the city. That may be possible that, through very quick analysis, we could opine that it just wouldn't work to split it into two, you know, site condo units. We rely on designers, and people look at the code and see how it fits in with the property. So many times, someone comes to us with an idea. So one of the things we'd rely on is the applicants to demonstrate whether or not it wouldn't work and why it wouldn't work, or why it would work, and we would include that in our report or perhaps ask them, if indeed the board wanted to table this, to update their application with alternatives as to why they could or couldn't work based on the input we're hearing tonight from the board. So in summary, we may not, staff may not be able to answer the question.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because if it is something that wouldn't be in front of us anyway, then, I mean, what's, it wouldn't, if, that wouldn't be more information that would add to our judgment call anyway. I mean, I know exactly what it is you're trying to do, and I appreciate it, and I want to say yes, but we're bound by a very specific set of criteria. So when we make a motion, we have to reference that criteria. And the criteria specifically, it very specifically says that, you know, this problem can't be caused by the previous owner, which it has been, and there really isn't another hardship. I mean, it's not in a regular lot. I mean, there really isn't another reason that we can frame into a motion. I think the best-case scenario would be to find an alternative way to do something like that. But I mean, regardless of whether or not, you know, they come, they go, and they find out a site condo is a possibility, when they come back around, these questions still don't get answered. So I still don't see a way to formulate a motion with the things we're supposed to do that says, yes, we can grant a variance because there isn't, I mean, there isn't any way for, that I can see that happening. So I want to say yes, and there's no bureaucratic way to do it, from what I can see.
And I think if we do postpone this, between the petitioner's interaction with city staff, us further exploring, to your point, I think, and it's a very good point about, you know, does this even belong in our wheelhouse, and should this be kicked over to Planning Commission? We keep it on the agenda, the petitioner, if there is a chance that we could take it up next meeting, then the petitioner's fee isn't lost. But at the next meeting, we could kick it off of our agenda too and not consider any moving forward any further on it because it might be someone else's issue.
Sure. I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable in either direction. Basically, I'm saying, from what I see right now, if it was a vote, there's, I couldn't say yes to it, but I'm not going to have a problem with it being postponed either. It's just a personal opinion.
Well, it's, yeah, just a preference of the board, you know. I don't know that there's a majority in any direction because we haven't had a vote. And let's hear some other comments. Mr. Keltzounas.
Do we have any history to this regard?
I don't believe so. Maybe I'll have Mr. Evans address that, please.
Well, there's no history that we could find regarding variances on the property, and we could look and report back to the board. And of course, we'd share this with the applicant, what the combination history was when this was done, and presuming it was two lots combined, but we just want to make sure.
Vice Chairman Eisenbacher.
Looking at the layout, I just realized that across the street, the property is also a relatively small house on a very large property. And I'm curious if you could look in GIS and see what the width of 571 Waddles?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, I believe that would be called frontage in the report.
Was that there?
Yeah. Well, there are a host of properties. It's like 571, so it looks like, yes, 200 feet.
So that one could be split with no request for grants at all?
Correct.
Yeah, and then the house next door to that is the one with a very nice, very large house set back off of Waddles. So there is, there's a mix of house sizes in this stretch of road and lot sizes. Makes it all the more difficult to be congruous for a neighborhood.
Does a member of the board who'd like to make a motion, Mr. Lambert?
First a question, then a motion. Mr. Evans, just to clarify, if we were to postpone this and the petitioner decided that they wanted to withdraw their request for variance for a lot split, would they get their money back or not?
No, they would not.
Okay, so from that point of view, it wouldn't matter whether we were to postpone or to deny the variance from this point of view of their money being tied up in this proposal?
Well, I would disagree with you. It would matter if, kind of to my point earlier, if we did postpone it, they came back with something. I don't know what something is because it seems like there's variables here, which I, that's what I hate to act when you don't have all the facts in front of you. And so I just think that in that point, they could withdraw by their own choice, and we wouldn't speak to it again next meeting. But it just kind of leaves a whole other question. I mean, and I, I think, I can see both ways. If people wanted to dispose of this, you know, I'll entertain the first motion that seconded, and we'll move forward on voting on that. Mr. McCauley.
I have a question. I don't have a motion. I'm, I have mixed feelings on this also because every lot in there is a different size for the most part. I don't think there's enough information to make a good judgment on this with other lots being 81 and, you know, and this is, you know, going down to 80 and everything I would like to see the petitioner go back and do the due diligence with the city, find out if it's the opportunity or not, because to me, would it stand out as something different than what's currently there in that area if they're split into two? I think it'd be minimal, but yet it doesn't meet the compliances that, what we're charged to enforce. So I want to, I'd rather have them explore all their options first and see before we have to make a decision on this.
Just looking at the legal description of the property, the legal description of this conjoined lot at 580 East Waddles Road is North Gate Sub, Lots 78 and 79. So it's not under dispute that this was initially designed to be two separated lots. The problem is how to actually formulate that into a motion based on the criteria we're handed that's legal. And I don't see a way to do that when it's obvious what they're, what they want to do is the intention of what was supposed to be here. It's, you know, so I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. And also, Mr. Evans, if I could just say two things. First of all, regarding the gentleman's comment, who was the neighbor from the backdoor street, I'd like, if we are, only if we're going to postpone this, I'd like you to look into where those trees fall related to the petitioner's property or not. And if they do, then I think if there is going to be possible action on this, I would like to, you know, possibly include, you know, protective, you know, portion of the motion as far as those being maintained.
Are you asking for like a tree survey, or?
Well, he said he wasn't sure if they were on the petitioner's property. It sounds like there may be over several, you know.
Anecdotally, we can look at aerial views, whether it's Google Maps or whatever it might be, but, I mean, if you want to know what trees are on what properties, the way the department would do that is request a tree survey from whatever property.
I think a visual would be fine, but we've requested, or, you know, required vegetation on, you know, various parcels before when we've taken action to be maintained.
Yeah, we could provide visuals in the, they'd be similar to what we're seeing here, just some close-ups.
Yeah.
Maybe different sources, Google Maps. The one you're looking at now is the county, different years, different times of years, just to give the board an idea of.
Sure.
Is that something that would already be covered by the woodland ordinance, or?
Well, the woodland ordinance wouldn't cover a smaller.
It's just too small. It's for subdivisions.
Correct.
Yeah.
Question. Right now, if he decided to cut every tree down in his property, what's to stop him from doing that?
There's not a city law that would stop.
So, I mean, I don't know why we're looking that hard at this because if he decided to stay there and not split the lot, he just cut every tree down. So it's, I mean, that's a non, that should be a non-factor in what we're looking at.
That's not true, Mr. McCauley, because we can require any screening that we demand for, in accord with the variance, you know, request. So you want this, we require that, and then if that's the majority of the board, some people may not care about that, I do. I think that's what makes our city very special, to protect that. And especially when you're going from, you know, very large lot, compared to my lot at my home, I consider that a large lot, and the screening aspect of more people coming and going all day long potentially, you don't know people's business, so that's why good neighbors have good fences or good tree screening, you know, between their parcels if it allows for it. Clearly, it does here, so. Mr. Lambert.
I would move to postpone action on this item to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Desmond, seconds. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. McCauley.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Keltzounas.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Galas.
Yes.
Mr. Desmond.
Yes.
Motion passes, so we are going to be potentially speaking to the petitioner and city staff on this matter in the April meeting.
Correct.
So, gentlemen, you can have a good night. You can stay if you'd like. No one's pushing you out the door. I just want to say that we're finished with you for tonight's meeting. We move on to item number six, communications. Mr. Evans, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Very good. Move on to item number seven, miscellaneous business, regarding a staff report on a number of variances requested and granted in the past year.
Yeah, I prepared this in response to a board member question at the last meeting, and I really don't have anything to add other than what's contained in my one-page memo. If any of the board members have any questions, I'll be happy to answer what I can.
Mr. Chairman Eisenbacher.
Yeah, I appreciated the report. I especially appreciated the 00082% of the houses actually requesting, or parcels, not houses, parcels requesting a variance. The only thing I, that I thought of that could possibly make this more complete would be compared to the number of parcels actually undergoing construction in a year. And I don't know if, because I mean, most houses, they just, they don't change at all over a year, but all the items that come before us are because people want to make a change to their property. I don't know how hard that number is.
So you're saying like how many variances in a time period compared to the number of residential building permits issued during the same time period?
Yeah, which would be how many properties had a building permit during that year or whatever. Because if you have multiples, it shouldn't count double, but how many?
Are you trying to get like a number of, out of all of the modifications that are being made, how, what percentage of them require variances, basically?
Yeah, like if the house needed, had a change of construction of some kind, whether it be electrical, foundation, whatever, they had a permit, they did work, they didn't need a variance. And if it's not hard to get, it's not that important.
Yeah, well, I think we should be able to run a, on a per-property basis and just get a count of the number of properties that received, residential properties that received a building permit in the same timeframe that here. I think, that sounds like something we could provide just as a curiosity matter for next meeting, sure.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Lambert.
Just one item, if people weren't aware here on the zoning board, that not only are we being carried live on Detroit's public access, but we're also live on YouTube, so we're being filmed there as we speak, so just to be, you're aware of that.
Wonderful. And then that YouTube.
Thanks, I wasn't nervous until then.
It lands on the city website so people can access it post facto, I think within a day or so. Isn't that great, Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Day or two.
A day or less, yes. It's gotten quicker.
It's pretty efficient. City staff is really great. Okay, so we'll move on to item number eight, related to public comment. If you'd like to address the board on anything at this time, please proceed right here to the podium and identify yourself and state your opinion or concern. Open that public comment up. Please proceed forward if you'd like to be heard by the board on any matter. Well, happy spring to everyone. That's my public comment. So I'll close the public comment. And final thoughts or comments by a member of the board or staff? Very good. We are adjourned until April. Have a good night, everyone.